All right, at 6:09 we'll call the meeting back in order without finding two additional triple As. We're down to one recorder, so back to the discussion. I apologize, Commissioner Harden, you were discussing something?
Well, I was just talking about setting the price, and we're going to do that according to the comps given. And there's also, you know, sometimes they sell stuff just like bidding on... You know how they do foreclosures?
Mm-hmm.
I mean, I don't know if that would have any bidders or not, but...
I wouldn't...
Steve was kind of determined before he left, and I don't know if he ever found out the answer, but he was trying to figure out on the Highland Drive and into other properties if we could just go through an agent and list it, or if it had to be auctioned off. I know that was a question he had, and I never heard his answer. I thought that you can just go through a listing agent or something, but Steve wasn't so clear on that.
Did he talk? Was there a reason? Did he talk to the auditor? Was there an RCW?
I don't have a clue.
Okay.
I know it's something he was looking into, and I think it was...
My guess would be because, again, we're a tax district, we're, you know, a public entity, whatever we are, that we, and we have to be completely like not looking like we're making side deals that I think if we set a price based on what a Realtor recommends and we get that price, that that's not... I would think, but we do have to check because we, remember, we had to auction all that stuff off and, you know, the boats and stuff.
And I think that's why I had Steve worried was the surplus property for...
So, I'm willing to ask the county auditor and the state auditor, both, what we need to do as a tax district to dispense with county, dispense with taxpayer property because it's district property, but...
If I may, the process that we got regarding the surplus stuff, I just, I've said this ever since that happened, that I believe, I am doubtful that we are required, like, I believe that there are requirements that need to be met, and I think that's understandable, but I am super doubtful that that degree of rigor is necessary, and unfortunately we paid thousands of dollars to be given that advice, and it was, I believe it was a mistake, because there are other districts that do, you know, auctions that dispose of things in ways that are not jumping through flaming hoops backwards, which is what I felt like. So, and I mean, if we want to, I would, the other suggestion I would say is also our risk manager for the insurance company might have some suggestions.
Okay, so I will ask the county, the state auditor, both, and the risk manager for our insurance company, and can we get comps?
Sure.
And per test costs, firm per test cost, and then also how much are we going to be paying for real estate commission, because we need to be upfront with that with the taxpayers also. I would like to, before we make a motion or move forward, unless anybody has a disagreement, have more information on that. Okay?
I'm fine to bring something back to the regular meeting.
Yes, yeah, I think this is great. We'll add that to the regular meeting as an action item, okay?
Cool, thanks.
No, thank you. Next is our budget review. So, commissioners asked, sent questions, commissioners sent questions in to Joanne before, as in preparation for her leaving in mid-June. Now is our chance to ask questions, or ask further questions, or get clarifications. Do you have the questions? Okay?
Do we get a copy of those?
Can we get a copy of those, because we can't see each other, so...
Oh, okay, are these all the same thing, sorry, before?
So what we have is the 2017, the 2018 P&amp;L.
I've got like 12 or something.
One should be a 20...
So it's only two, so two different documents, is that right? Okay, so...
I think those were supposed to be for anyone.
Oh, okay.
There should have been a stack, a single stack for you, with just a 2017 and a 2018 P&amp;L, all right? There was the class program pricing formula, and then the other thing involved in that was the mission statement and values that were put together. And that's the second part of your homework to take home and review for the regular meeting.
But we're not talking about that.
No, we're not talking about it. It's not on the agenda. Thank you. Good point. And we'll wait for those questions to be brought out. Julie, could you send me in the email the number and the name for our insurance companies, please? Because if you send me that, then I know who I'm calling instead of digging around. I would greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
What's up with the flag? Is it kind of jumping water?
Oh my.
I don't know.
I will...
I can open and pull it down if you want someday.
Or fix it.
Or wrap it around, or fix it, either one or the other.
Do we have zip ties?
I don't know, we might. I've never made it as far as that catwalk, so...
Didn't it jump from the...
No.
No.
People like that keep me in business. Thank you.
It's a very narrow ladder. It's about to get up there, I don't know where it's going.
It is, it is.
That blue thing?
That's the HVAC, it's off.
Oh, is it usually...
Yes, yes. So the HVAC is off, so that's why it has the deflated flag.
I didn't know there were deflatable hoes either.
In its waiting position there.
Normally those cost for a mark.
So, going through these one by one, outstanding payables and receivables, there are currently none. Do we have any forecasted that you can see going on the horizon that we don't know about? No.
No.
All right. Potential exposure for unemployment and refunds, with the way we play our, pay our unemployment is, what do we have coming up, and how much is it going to buy us?
So we paid, on the second page, under number 10, we paid 2059 to ESB for cleaning crew. I don't know who else pulled that out of the planet. I don't believe there's anyone else.
Because I asked a question, I would say, because I know she gets us out of paying it sometimes, and I wanted to know who, who had we gotten out of paying it for that they put in for it and the state said, oh, you need to pay it, and you called up and said, no, we don't, because some...
Anyone who was let go.
And that's why...
Or for, say...
For cause?
Yes. So for, because of, because our, what do you call this, our cleaning crew, they filed unemployment because they lost their job, not for fault, and they were able to claim that. And they, there's only a few employees that work 680 hours, and that's what makes them eligible to collect unemployment. Not a lot of our guards, not a lot of our instructors, you know, fought for unemployment, so...
Okay. Any further questions on question two?
Okay, so also anybody who quits also doesn't get unemployment, correct?
Unless, unless they work over 680 hours in the ESB.
And if they had a good reason for quitting, like they have to have a valid reason for quitting.
So valid reason, the pool was closed, and they quit.
Yeah, but that's not, that's not, they wouldn't have quit then.
Say they were being harassed in the workplace and it wasn't addressed, and they quit because of that, and they had documentation, they can still collect unemployment, that type of situation.
Okay, okay.
If they didn't like the hours they were being given, and they decided they'd rather go to the movies every day instead of getting, you know, a paycheck, that would not be a valid reason.
Okay.
Okay.
And so, sorry, just on number two again, so as far as refunds go, I was...
I wanted to clarify, is this refunds patron refunds?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so Julie will address this part of the question.
It's, so it's a challenging number to come up with. My best guess is somewhere around $40,000. That's a combination of account balances, people that have purchased punch cards they weren't able to use, memberships that still had time on them.
That's our exposure.
That's our exposure for those. Now, in addition to that, we have this lovely binder called the affiliate binder, that is punches that were purchased in our previous point-of-sale system. There are hundreds of them in there. I have no idea what to value them at. I have had one person come back wanting a refund out of there. I have no idea what to value them at. The board has never chosen to have punch cards expire, so technically we could be on the prowl of those if those people were to come back.
I don't think that's necessarily a board decision, is it? I mean, we asked for clarification about the law, because gift certificates do not expire in the state of Washington, and we were trying to understand. Sorry, I'm just trying to catch everybody up.
Yeah, thank you.
Because this discussion's been had, and so we weighed in on the matter of trying to understand what the law would dictate in this situation, and I don't, you can absolutely correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe we ever got a final answer on that one.
I don't remember getting one, not legally.
Yeah.
You probably didn't ask the question over...
But I think it's ethical if somebody has credit and they want to use it, that they should be, I mean, maybe I'm speaking selfishly, but, you know, I bought a membership shortly before we closed, and I haven't, I feel like, I know that, I understand that it doesn't seem like I'm going to have my year membership, but I will have the balance of the money.
The monetary value.
That, I mean, that's what, that's what I think anyone should be able to expect.
And I think as far as a follow-up on it, I don't know, I think Erica was interim at the time that conversation was had. I know that we did do a little bit of research and we looked into it, and we saw that other similar facilities do have their punch cards expire after six months or a year. I know if you purchase personal training at any of the gyms in town, that those are, they're prepaid purchases, but they expire if you don't use them in a reasonable amount of time.
Yes, and of course, if you buy the 10 punch, you have to use it, I think...
Within a year.
I thought it was within a month. It's a shorter...
No, it's within a year, because I've got...
Within a year, okay.
But it, and it does make sense, because the value of those punches, what you paid for them is, I paid a dollar per punch, and the value of them is now $2 per punch, a year, you know, a year later perhaps, or just to say it. So, the value of the punches changes, and so they should, you should be able to, but you're right, I don't think we ever got a final answer.
Gift certificates, we didn't, and actually, Steve McCaslin was, he was here when we, when we last had this discussion. Part of it was a final disposition on, again, gift certificates do not expire in the state of gift cards, gift certificates do not expire in the state of Washington, and so...
Do we know how many of those were gifted, or how many of those were purchased?
Well, no, I'm just saying in general, when you, when you basically are giving somebody, it doesn't mean that you had to give it to someone else.
Okay.
Right? It just means that if I went in and I bought a gift card from you, I can come back and expect to use it whenever. I don't know, because then the question, well, banana court is does this, okay, do we know that it's legal?
Yeah.
And then part of it is just making sure that we're, it's a really tough position to be in, because that's a lot of exposure.
I think it's something that we would want to clarify in the forward, so that when we do reopen up, if we punch cards again, we have a solid answer.
So, we've got...
And if they can expire, but, yeah.
If we've got $40,000 that we know of, and then you said the other binder is unknown amount.
It's an unknown amount.
Okay, how many people have come back for refunds in the last, say, what are we, in March, May, five months? Sorry. In the last five months, how many people have asked?
The bulk of the refunds came prior to 2018.
Wild guess, I wouldn't hold you to it. Do you have any idea how many we've had in the last five months? If you don't, that's...
Five, I would say, maybe.
Maybe five, so once a month, okay. You had a question, Commissioner?
Yeah, I mean, I guess with that, it seems like something that's not an issue, so there's no reason to create one where there isn't. It just, one of the thoughts I was having is, I get that, you know, when these went out, they didn't have an expiration date, they're valid, all that, but isn't it also logical to say that, you know, we're not going to pay out refunds during a, during a pool closure? When we reopen, your thing's still valid, is that? But like I said, I wouldn't want to create a problem where there's not one.
Right, we would have to come up with a policy. Right now, we don't have a policy to not pay back refunds.
We don't. I just wonder if it's worth having one for, for this pool closure and any future ones possibly.
We did offer an option for them on the refund form. It gives them the option to have us hold the funds until we reopen, and it also gave them the option to donate the funds to the district. And we really encourage people to hold their funds, if at all possible. And we do have quite a few people that took that option.
And I get in the perfect world, it would be really nice to give people their money back if they want it, but if it's, if it's that re, paying out those refunds or paying the insurance, it's like the rock and hard place.
Here's what I think, I wouldn't buy an annual membership if you told me, through no fault of my own, I can't exercise this annual membership. You closed because you lost the levy vote, because we didn't trust you. It's like, I want my money back.
That's what I said, I wouldn't want to create a problem where there's not one.
Yeah.
If only five people have asked for a refund in five months, leave it alone, right?
And it's the right thing to do.
Yeah, so we know there's $40,000 out there, and could be possibly more. Okay. Commissioner Shennleton, any more on that? No? Any more on two before I move to three? Okay, three, that's a big one, especially with the money we have for the dog park being at the top of the list there. Can you please outline how we will track or earmark the gifted money from the county to ensure that it goes only to the park-related items?
Well, I just found out who I had to bill. I know you sent out an email saying we have to bill the county, and we found out today who exactly we had to bill from county, and I would do that, I, the only thing I can suggest is create a line item on the...
Well, I think what Steve had said was that, and there was an email somewhere that he sent, I don't remember if it was to one of you or to the county, but I think that the plan was that the money would be put into either the reserve account or one of those other accounts, and we would physically transfer those amounts to your M&amp;O as a reason.
Okay.
And that should just be a matter of facts.
We'd also have to put that on the P&amp;L line item every month, to see what the total was when we put in there, and what the balance is, and something, because that's, that would be something that would be clear and transparent, and that way the county could see it, we could see it, and the taxpayers could see it.
It will be on the revenue side, just like the current already taxed...
Okay, awesome. Further questions, comments?
I only, sorry, and I know this can actually wait. I mean, this was really making sure that when we do get the money, that we just ensure that it only goes to that because of the other things. I'm sure you understand that. But the only thing that I was wondering, and again, I can just ask a question and we can move it to the side, but was, because we've been paying things like the water bill still, correct?
They, there's been donations, maybe.
Okay, okay. What I was wondering was when, when do we, when do we say that the clock starts? And so, again, just so that that's evident.
I want to say it started February, March, and April, and donations.
Okay, but you know, so with, in relation to the county money, that we kind of say, okay, you know, is there anything that we've paid out that we would apply things already paid to, or we starting fresh? It's just a, just having a process, that's all. I don't need to know the answer right now, it's just like, just so that it's clear, and so that we know where we're at. Cool, thank you.
Four, can we get an informed estimate of ballot cost for November based on any historical that we have for midterms? CASA, former director, estimated 5K. Do we know if this was informed or arbitrary?
I went to the elections office today, and there is no way for them to tell us how much our bill is going to be.
Okay.
Not until the election's over.
But I would say, don't ever, ever, ever let anybody do an election in August again, just because we were totally shocked. We had no idea what the cost is.
$32,000.
$32,000, yeah, and it was because there was just us paying for the election, whereas if you do it in November, a bunch of people are on the ballot that the Northwood Beach Park and Rec people get.
So midterm, midterm election is going to be better for us, because there will be people on the ballot, so we will share that cost with others.
We thought we were sharing with the fire people?
District, too.
And we shared like this much with them, apparently. It's like, we, we had to pay so much more.
I do have one question. What, so the November election cost is the sum of the $9,306. So, so that was $16,000 to run the November, is that correct?
1117 and 1111.
1111.
Yeah, so there was years ago.
Yeah, I have to go back.
Oh, years ago.
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
[laughing]
Yeah, well, I thought, why did we have two different sums for the one, yeah, okay.
Gotcha.
And it's because we have more people in the district now, plus postage is gone up. There's definitely why there's a difference.
What contractual service obligations do we have? How much do they cost, and when will they expire? I said, C number eight. Oh, wow.
We can wait till number eight.
Okay, let's skip that and go to number eight, all right? Sounds good. Can we get the April, May numbers for the power and water? Also consider updating the P&amp;L spa boiler.
So I don't have the numbers for May, because I'm still, well, locked in, the beginning of May, I received the bill for power, and I had to dispute that, so I'm still waiting for them to send me.
Okay, not appreciating.
And then, so for, for the spa boiler, on, under number eight, spa boiler includes the hot tub, patron water heating, locker room heating, lobby, fishbowl, bathroom, and back office. And then boiler is boiler and...
Is it, is it reasonable to just update the P&amp;L with something else, so that, from, I would say from an outsider's perspective, it looks bad, but from an insider's perspective, you know, it's, I get it, like, I think we maybe didn't even entirely understand, like...
Well, yes, but also we get a bill, two separate bills for gas, one for oil, and one for spa.
But, I mean, on the P&amp;L, can we just update it in some way, so that we know it's more than just a spa boiler?
You mean...
ETC. I mean, anything, like, if we, anything, anything.
Something.
Well, I'm saying anything, anything that notes to us that it's more than just a spa boiler, because at least somebody would say, what does that mean?
Yeah, why is it just spa boiler? Can we add something more to it?
So, so boiler is the, the heat, heat the water and heating the air in the pool, so you could call that, can you call it pool heat? Is that too many letters?
For boiler.
Yes, and then you could call spa boiler heat, because everything else...
Stop.
Pool heat and heat.
That will all fit.
I know the stunner...
As of a week ago, I don't think, I don't think any of the five of us, I know at least several of us did not realize that it was, we wondered why it was so much. I think it was news to all of us. So, so it's not news to a future board.
The P&amp;L you gave us, real quick.
Yes.
So you got the boiler, boiler electricity for May of '18. Are these current numbers for this month? And they, May 1 through 30th of '18, did you call and get those, or?
Those are actually the April numbers, sorry.
Those are April, they're just in the May column?
Well, because we received the bill in May for April.
Copy.
Yes.
Okay.
So it may...
And we did, and we're disputing the March one that's in April, correct? Okay, so that's why there's no April numbers.
For...
So I'm looking down at April, '18, and I got zero on electricity, water.
Well, because I'm still trying to...
Disputing, right, okay.
And then for CBP...
You're right.
And patron water, so in March, one was paid beginning of March, and then one was paid at the end of March.
Ah.
So they're both under March, so it depends on when I, I try not to hold on to bills, try to pay them right away. There's been times that, in the beginning of the year, I had to hold something, because that was the time that we ran on, before the pool.
All right.
No, it's better that you pay them, and we don't end up paying a penalty. We like that. Thank you.
Number seven, can we please start adding the following items in monthly recording package, the WIB account statement, individual monthly P&amp;L in addition to the cumulative?
Yes, which is what the unclassified 2017, this is what it's going to look like.
Cool.
It doesn't have the budget numbers, but it just has the months, each month.
Okay.
Yeah, I like that.
Yeah. And then the would-be on bank, sorry.
For the petty cash.
Okay, you know, it's one of those things, I don't think anybody, we know...
Oh, the unclassified.
It's technically, it's a whole document, but none of us ever thought about it, and I was like, that would just be nice to, for us to start having.
Right now, the only thing that we're really using that for is for Department of Revenue.
See, and I had no idea, I've got petty cash listed in a metal box.
We've had that conversation a number of times, because it took, like, to me, that was the big joke.
Yes, well, the auditor actually asked me that, why do you have a petty cash bank account? I, well...
It's like, it's just for the team. Or, oh, that they think that it should go away completely.
Well, not that it should go away, but why is, why is your checking account called a petty cash?
Okay, right, right. Yeah, and I think just the additional visibility, it would just, I think it would just be nice, even if nothing changed, I know that's super boring, but, you know, it's kind of the like, here it is, these are public funds.
Sure.
Yeah. Thank you very much.
Got it. So that's over there. Okay, number eight, go into number eight. These are the bills we pay on a regular basis, monthly, quarterly, and annually. You broke them down for us, thank you. What was the normal rate when we were open for business, and what did they become since we've closed?
Which is on you, thank you.
And that is on the one we just talked about, the unclassified?
The unclassified?
Right?
It's the unclassified, the 2018 and 2017, so...
Okay, I don't, I don't think I got an unclassified 2018.
What does unclassified mean?
Well, it just doesn't have the budget numbers.
Oh, here they are.
Okay, all right, I just wanted to understand the difference in my P&amp;L.
You need a 2018 one?
I got it.
You're talking to a former student, you were worrying.
Yeah, I got it.
See, and that's never, I was like, I just don't know what it means.
I was trying to think, like, I haven't read into anything.
Awesome, thank you. And then breakdown of monthly is here.
Thank you. This is actually, a lot of this is just going to be helpful reference material, not only for me, but for others moving forward, so it's super helpful.
Which of the annual ones have we have been paid for this year, or, okay, which are due, are going to come due before?
Bay alarm has been paid, barracuda backup is August, but because we don't have our IT, who's usually is the one who negotiates all that, I'm not really sure what's going to happen to that.
Okay.
I think Barracuda Backup might give us a call and say, hey, here, expired, we need to renew, what would you like to do? But that won't happen until August.
August, okay. Island County Treasurer?
Clean Water Utility, this is for the three property, CBP and Hillcrest, these are paid in April.
So they're paid already?
Your property test, yes. We only get, we only get it in, due in April, because it's $39, so we don't get paid, we don't get a bill until April.
They just stay at all ones.
19, 13.
They bill us one time.
Public Health?
That one's already paid, because it is effective June 1st.
Okay. And the State Department of Revenue?
Business license. Oh, July.
July.
Eleven dollars.
So it'll be due in July.
Oh, it's eleven dollars, is what you said?
It's, it's eleven dollars.
Okay, it's gonna break the date.
Yeah, it's good to know.
Why are they called those things skirts?
Oh, for the kayaks, yes. Certi press control.
Yes, quarterly.
Okay. And when in the middle of the quarter?
Um, we should be getting one in July. August.
Okay. August is the next one. So August and then probably December?
No, if you November, wouldn't you pay August?
November, you're right.
About how much is that?
Um, ninety twenty-two.
Nine hundred dollars?
No, ninety dollars.
Oh.
I took a deep breath there, I'm going, wow, that's a lot of. Some past.
She's using the tools, she's using the tools.
And sharp copying machine? Maintenance?
Yes, that depends on our usage and it's gone down significantly because.
We're not using it. Alright.
But they are also paid, um, quarterly.
Quarterly, same type of, pardon me, I am sorry, same, uh, months, August, November or?
Sometimes it depends on when they call us to, to find out what the usage is. So I have to go in the printer and find out what the usage is and then I give the number to them and then they bill us. Sometimes they get, and then they call us a month.
Okay. Further questions on number eight from the board?
I have a related, related, yet slightly indirect question. When we get distributions from the county, typically around what day of the month do those come?
The thirty first, the end of the month.
Okay, thank you, okay, thanks.
Thank you, I'm writing that down. Okay, is there somewhere we can further economize with regards to the above bills? We took off one phone line which reduced our phone bill by a few dollars. Oh, that's your answer?
Yes.
Yes.
Uh, I think that, that is.
We run the air and Commissioner Holly did ask, you know, about the air handling unit, cause it does look a little different in there. Um, I know Matt has to run the air, um. He doesn't have to, but he does because otherwise we get a funky smell.
Yes.
Um, but it still meets the health requirements for a pool that's not being used. However, um, we don't want a funky smell in the pool, should we get a plan to reopen it? So Matt runs that minimal once a month. Outside of that, what else can we do? One thing I know I spoke to Julie about is the, um, Dr. Gibbons today and I talked and what he has volunteered as part of being a good community partner as he waits numbers and a plan from us to reopen the pool. We talked, he, he has offered his maintenance supervisor who specializes in energy efficiency as a good community partner just to come down and walk through and see if there's something that we can do to better become more energy, um, efficient. Um, so Julie's gonna contact Dr. Gibbons tomorrow and the school district is gonna send him down here, uh, just, just as a community partner. No charge to the district, so to see if there's something we can do to be more, uh, cost effective as we go through the shutdown and also as we start to, um, open up. So he's gonna give us ideas tomorrow. So hopefully we'll have that, um, Julie, if you could put that in the staff report for our regular meeting. Outside of that, do you two ladies see anything?
No, because Steve canceled a lot of our.
We don't have any access fluff anywhere. I, I haven't found any in the.
We might be able to suspend an additional email account or two once the man leaves. Um, I'll have to shuffle some stuff around, but I think that we could probably suspend mine and we may be able to suspend the director account. The way it works, you, you save a little bit. Uh, the way it works is it would make the emails that are existing accessible to us. If someone emails those accounts, I would still be able to see them through the admin account.
Okay.
I wouldn't be able to respond to them through, the, I, I would have to respond to them through the admin account, not through the account that they were sent to. Um, but that might be an option that would save us a few more dollars there.
So we're at seventy-eight, eighty-one a month and that'll?
I think, I wanna say it's like ten dollars a month it would save, so it's not huge, but it's ten dollars.
Ten, ten dollars a month, thank you for being frugal, thank you.
Sean?
Yes, sir?
That, uh, great news was like you said about the maintenance supervisor from the school. I know, uh, I'm trying to remember what the exact number was. The amount of money he has saved the school district a year is, is dramatic. I mean, we're talking like million dollars, it's, it's a big number. Um, also, that was, uh, that's something that they offered up mid-November as well, so I just want everybody to know that. And there was some things that we hadn't acted on and I'm glad that, I'm very glad that we're gonna act on at this time. So thank you.
You're welcome.
For having that meeting.
Number ten, unemployment, uh, whom are we responsible? We discussed this one already, didn't we?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't think we need to revisit unless somebody has something.
Well, I, when, um, so somebody applies for unemployment and the state sends us a letter, an email, how do they notify us?
A quarterly bill.
And how long?
If they, if they approve it, but they're.
Okay, so if they approve it.
We get a notice and, um, if they did get a go or fired. And that's when I would ask for relief from benefit charges.
Okay. And do we have like, is there some time limit that you can do it or?
You know, they send us, they send us a new one almost every week when somebody applies and then I have to send the same response every week.
Okay.
Every time.
Okay.
It's, it's dated, it's dated weekly. So if, I, I figured if I don't respond, I'm, I'm, so I just responded every single one of them and I, I fax it, I don't mail it, I fax it to them.
Okay.
If another one comes, I do receive.
And I hope you have noted in here, we did find out that they can only plug for twenty-six weeks. Now, I think, say that they collected for thirteen weeks and then they got a job at Seven-Eleven and they worked there for a month and it didn't work out. They can still go back and file against us and plug for another thirteen weeks at that point.
They get twenty-six weeks total, is, okay.
Okay, leave a file on how to, how to do this, cause I remember you telling me we had paid for some people that we shouldn't have paid for.
Um, prior to you.
Prior to you taking these.
I don't know how that got through.
Because somebody didn't know what you know.
Well, no, I, I think it was just, you know, I think they received the notice and then they put it in this person's file. And then got a bill and then we paid, so.
Right, we did this. Yes. Well, thank you for.
Sure.
I appreciate the fact that you look at every bill like, I don't owe this, oh, yeah, I do, okay.
Well, right, I think that's, that's the job, yeah, if you're doing it.
I try.
You've done a very good job.
Thank you.
Okay, the QB breakdown of wherever expenses tabulated, what exactly is included, office supplies?
Well, office supplies are consumables such as paper, pens, folders, um, mailing labels.
Well, that was just an example and it was just because I wondered if something weird came up, how would you know where it was in the?
So.
Is, is it broken out somewhere or not?
Well, because on QuickBooks, I can click on a number and it'll give me the detail.
Okay.
But if I give you that detail, your P and L.
No, 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 and I don't, I don't want that detail, I just wanted to make sure that it is, detail is somewhere.
So there's someone, it's somewhere, somebody came in behind you or Julie and had to look at it or if, you know, for an auditor to look at or if somebody had a question about a certain item, we could pull up that detail and share that with, you know, a taxpayer or, or whomever would, okay.
That was all, that was what my question was, cause I just, when you leave, we're losing a lot of knowledge and I just wanna make sure we're. I, I know, but she hasn't been doing your thing, so she, it's good, she'll be good, but it's like, we're, I, you know, I just didn't wanna see all the, all the knowledge walk out the door.
So I think you will be okay.
So.
I think you will.
Exact tabulations for this year's budget, do you have them? So when the former director tabulated this year's proposed budget, do you have the formulas or the assumptions or was there a folder on his computer that he used that has this information?
That was my, you know, cause how did he come up with, here's our projected income, revenue and, and I didn't, I didn't know if he shared that with you. My guess was not.
My guess is there's probably maybe notes in his computer somewhere in a file.
Okay.
His files are very well organized. Just a quick search, I didn't see anything more than the notes that are on the budget that you guys received. But there may be well deeper detail. I know that we do have breakdowns and charts of how he calculated, like what the costs should be for swim school and the pricing for swim school and whatnot. And I think that that exists for all the programs. I'm not so sure about for things like daily admissions.
Okay. We use historical data, I'm assuming on daily, okay.
I know that when he and I were discussing it, that we looked at historical data from the previous years. Yeah, I made estimates on where we thought we can improve and where we could, um, see increases based on different promotional things and events and whatnot. Off the top of my head, I don't remember what those percentages were that we used.
Okay. Can you stand?
Yeah, I saw you walk around.
You want us to take a, take a break or can you, do you wanna continue?
Um, if we take a break, that would be.
So we'll take a, it is now, um, eighteen, eighteen fifty, we'll take a five minute break?
Yeah.
Okay.
Of this category, is right?
We'll call the meeting back to order at six fifty-six and please discuss the movement of dollar bill from the patron to our bank account to a payment of a bill. How often is there a check in the system to count the funds as they are progressing through the system?
What number is that?
Number thirteen, lucky number thirteen.
My answer is, well, the payments are received by the CSS during normal business hours and then at the end of each, um, CSS shift, the door is counted. The oncoming CSS will count the door and verify that shift report and then the closing will write up the deposit and place the deposit in the safe. And then discrepancies over two fifty are reported to Julie and then she will review them and will attempt to resolve that discrepancy. And then the following day, I'll verify the deposit bags and then, um, deposit it at the bank. And then on Thursdays, Island County will sweep that account to put in our P and L account.
Sweep it like, take out all the money?
Take some of it.
Oh.
Take some of the money to put in our.
So is it a percentage or they?
Well, no, actually, it's what the deposits are. I, I thought about something else, so never mind that. But yes, it is what was, um, deposited pro, to.
What we report.
Okay.
Prior, yes.
Okay.
So every Thursday, what we report to them, they take out for the report from the prior week?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, what do you take down to Coopville?
Vouchers, bills.
Oh, okay, 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 got it.
They need to cut the checks.
Okay.
For me to, to send to our vendors.
That makes sense, okay.
Question, so, um, deposit at the bank into the?
Nope.
Okay, so into, into where?
This is, uh, this is an account, pass-through account that former county has access to.
Okay, that's right, okay, that makes perfect sense, thank you.
Cause we don't have, you know, here, really that.
So it's basically a holding, it's just, it's, it's a holding thing, it's not something we can't spend from it, that's, I was trying to understand cause that's the first time I've heard of that. So we can't, it's not something we can take out of, we, it's, it's simply a, we're pushing money to them.
Yes, that's where our petty cash account is.
Right, yep, got it, thank you.
And then the, um, the daily sales receipts are entered in QuickBooks and if I find any other discrepancies that I let Julie know. Um, so for customers, we bill the customer and then they send a check. I enter the payment into QuickBooks and then the check is deposited in the bank and then that account is also swept by the account. And then at the end of the month, when the bank statements arrive in the beginning of the next month, I will reconcile the bank statements. Um, they're verified by the executive director and then the voucher report is placed in a monthly packet for review and approval. And then to answer how often is there a check in the system to count the funds? It depends on how many shifts there are that day and the time of funds, the time the funds were received.
Okay. Um, further questions on, for clarification on thirteen?
Yeah, that was pretty thorough, thanks.
Fourteen, how much petty cash do we keep on hand and what is it used for?
I, we have about six grand in our petty cash account. Um, and it's only really being used for DOR. There was.
For what, I'm sorry?
Department of Revenue, it's no tax liability. Um, there was a time in the beginning of the month when I was late running payroll because I was waiting for someone to turn in a time sheet. And QuickBooks wouldn't let me run the payroll late to do direct deposit. Um, and our payroll account is connected with our QuickBooks payroll to do direct deposits, so I had to write from that side.
And have we replaced that?
I have to submit the reimbursement part, but I will to, to.
Okay, thank you.
Replenish the petty cash.
Yes.
It seems like it runs at about seven grand, right, like, where they're on seven.
Oh, okay.
It's, it's what it normally adds.
We were, okay. Uh, number fifteen, do we have a checkbook or all checks written by the county? And that's pretty much answered from before, it's vouchers are written by the county and then we have the petty cash. Okay? Um, sixteen, what is the limit of single expenditures on our charge cards? Does the director have to approve all expenses on charge cards before they're made? Or are the holders of the card empowered to use as they see fit? And/or are they limited to some amount?
Um, there's no limit on a single expenditure, but, um, Steve would always need, needing the purchases approved prior to.
And that was verbal, not written? Okay.
And then once the purchases are made, the receipts are, are given to me because when I submit the credit card payment to, or request payment from county, um, for the credit card, they need to have all the receipts.
Okay, I have a limit on my credit cards, do we not?
Yes, it's, um, twenty-five hundred for hers and five thousand for mine.
Thanks.
Probably a month ago. Probably on the bill.
Yes, yes.
Okay. And do you do anything with time cards?
Yes, we get them approved and I have them.
Good job.
Alright, any further questions that we haven't answered or asked that, uh, fall into the budget review, there, there are P and L questions. We got these tonight, so I can't really ask questions on something I haven't reviewed. Thank you for providing them since we did ask, um, I appreciate that. Um, thank you for taking the time and having the public meeting, the special meeting to hear everybody's questions prior to, yes ma'am.
Uh, is, is there anything else that you think that we should know? I, I know that that's a loaded, it sounds like a loaded question, but is there anything we haven't asked that you feel like we need to know? And, and instead of maybe putting you on the spot, if you think of anything, if you would please send us an email, it would be greatly appreciated.
Okay.
If, if there are things that we obviously, you know, we still are learning certain things and we don't know about ask. If something comes up, it doesn't even have to be, from, from my perspective, it doesn't even have to be, you know, look, I'm gonna make a list of all these things. If you think of something, shoot us an email, if you would please.
Okay, sure.
Thanks.
And I do wanna sit down with you before you leave for one day. Not a whole day, uh, that sounded ominous, didn't it? Wow, I would like to sit down with you for, uh, for a while before you leave.
Okay.
Alright, so. Alright, nothing else? All right, nothing else? We'll close the gym item budget review and go on to recreation program discussion. Julie?
So I sent you guys an email that has a list of different types of recreational programs that I think we can potentially offer. At the bottom of it, I did have an example pricing thing. And then after I sent the email, I realized that I had left a couple of things out. So I did this little sheet for you for today that has the pricing formula at the top and then an example for a class below that. Basically, the way that Steve was calculating it, and I just kind of felt Steve, was an instructor rate, which is a loaded amount that covers the payroll taxes plus profit margin built in. A facility charge, which typically is twenty dollars per hour for the space. And then, of course, a material supply charge, if the course requires materials at all. We may include a markup on those. Alternatively, we could calculate the instructor rate to cover just the hourly wage plus payroll taxes and then charge a markup on the entire cost of the class. Depending on how you did that, that might bring a little greater profit in. My goal really would be to be providing quality activities for the community's children and families at a price that's reasonable. So I would want to make sure that anything that we do is priced so that we make a profit, we cover our expenses. But that we're putting out a valuable service to the community and just things for kids to do and families to do. I think activities are one of the greatest ways that you keep kids away from drugs and other high-risk activities. So being able to offer a variety of things and engage the community, keep the community coming here, remind them that there's a pool here. I, I think that's really, really important, especially in the summer months when you have kids going so many different directions. In the list I sent you, I put asterisks next to the things that I think we could run with pretty easily. Taunt kids fitness classes with games and songs that encourage activity and movement. We could use previous instructors for that. I've had conversations with a couple of different people that would be interested in coming back and doing classes of that nature. That way, we have somebody that's CPR first aid certified in their leading classes. And they're people that, you know, if we have swim parents that bring their kids back, it's going to be familiar faces for them, so they're going to have that recognition. For some of the things, we may need to go out and hire brand-new staff, depending on what we want to do. I have, I think, four different things that I'm really fine tuning that it's a motive that I think we could run with, probably starting in July. Anything I do, I'm going to use that price structure. We're going to do sign-ups and we're going to make sure that we've covered the cost of the class before the class runs, so that there's not any risk of the district losing money as a result. One of the big things that I'd really like to get going with is a family game night. And it would be, I'm thinking Wednesday evenings, open the doors, probably five o'clock, go five to eight PM. I would structure it within my existing hours. I can work at the front while games are going on in this room. A big part of that would be that we would bring back concession sales. And in addition to that night, I would like to structure my work hours so that I spend, I'm thinking three hours a day, maybe three days a week, where I have the lobby open. We can do concession sales. We have so many people at the skate park and the ball fields. And almost every time I'm in and out of the building, I'm having someone stop me and, do you guys still sell snacks? Can I get a bottle of water? I think we're missing an opportunity to generate some revenue. And if I can structure it in my already existing workday, I think that's something we can do. I have the ability to lock the door to the locker room area so that there's no way for people to get to the pool deck area. And I've made arrangements, tentatively, I think I confirm them up where I would not be in the building alone for any length of time. Because I do have that as a safety concern, just because it's such public knowledge that we're closed and I want to make sure I'm cautious for that. So that's kind of where I'm at with all of that type of stuff. I don't know if you guys have specific questions about specific activities?
I have a, my question, how do you come up with twenty dollars an hour for the, I mean, that really sounds cheap. But I don't know if it is or not.
For the room?
Yeah.
So that would, um, last year, we charged fifteen dollars an hour for the room. It was just kind of an arbitrary number to make something for people that wanted to use just the room. It's, the twenty dollars an hour is equal, I believe, to what a lane hour was calculated at when Steve was factoring in pricing. So we just translated that to the charge for the room.
So it's just for this?
It's just this room typically, and you have to consider, we're adding that in as a facility charge. Most of the time, running a class is not going to add anything to our utility bill other than maybe a couple flushes of the toilet. These lights are on anyway if we're in the building. And oftentimes during the day, you don't even really need a light on in here to be able to do an activity. It depends on the specific activity. So that's just, it's a charge to help compensate for the utilities. It's not, it's not meant to be the whole of the act.
All right. Discussion, questions, comments? So.
Sorry, go ahead.
Go ahead.
I was, I was waiting to let everybody else go first. The, well, like, first of all, I think these are really, I think a lot of these are really great and they seem doable. My worry of seeing the whole list, I, I appreciate you putting the stars on them because I think the whole list given, it seems like that would be perhaps, there, there are really good ideas there, but starting small, so I appreciate. And it was like, okay, good, because that was like, at first I was a little overwhelmed. Like, I would love to see all of these things, but there's probably not time to do them all.
There's not time to do them all this summer.
Right, right, absolutely. And I know some of these, like the family game night, has been an idea in your head that has really been, that you've thought of and been like thinking about for a long time. And I, and I appreciate that. The, um, so the fact that it's comparable down to, I think, I think six are the ones that you outlined, is, is cool. The only thing that I would look at adding to overhead would be your, uh, some, some amount of your time, planning time, so admin time, the background checks that we know would have to happen for, for new staff. Some, some facility overhead of some sort, a, a little bit. Not the, hey, we're going to make them, you know, I mean, we're going to, we're going to get this, but, but something. And then any marketing expense, of course, as well. And, and here would be my only, like, I agree with, I agree with everything you said about affordable activities. Here's my little concern, is that, let's say, we looked at making something so affordable this year that when we went to offer it next year, it, we couldn't cover the costs. I don't know if that makes any sense, but meaning that like, well, we're not worried about covering this or we're not worried about covering that. And so like, well, this year it's twenty dollars. But then when we look at the pricing formula with an operational facility, we go, oh, but what about this thing and this thing and this thing and this thing? And then it's the twenty-dollar activity this year is a thirty-dollar activity next year. Just having that in mind, does that make sense?
It makes sense. I think that that twenty-dollar facility charge would have been the same last year. It would be the same this year.
And I don't, I just wasn't, right, I made up that number. I'm saying, I'm saying, what, what I meant by twenty dollars was, if game night was twenty dollars for a family, again, I'm, I'll, I'll pick twenty-five because it's not on here anywhere. Let's, let's say game, game night was five dollars for a family, okay? Just pick that. But then if, once we did the numbers with an operational facility with more kind of balls in the air, we said, well, it actually needs to be eight dollars. Why is it more expensive this year than it was last year? And so I just would want to be mindful of ensuring that all the costs are really met. Again, not trying to parse out, you know, to an end detail, but things like, like all the overhead that we can cover so that, so that it's consistent.
Well, and I think, I think that the way that this was calculated, for the most part, our overhead's going to be the same whether we're open or closed as far as the cost of an instructor.
But the reason, but the reason that you have activities is also to help cover, I mean, is to help cover your overhead. So I understand that it's an expected expense, but part of that is cost recovery at the same time. And so while our goal is not one hundred percent cost recovery, we should be doing some cost recovery for overhead costs.
Which I think is where that facility charge comes in. And I think you also, you know, part of building in the profit goes to cover that in the long term.
And that's where I think. Hopefully, if, as long as you don't have unexpected, um, costs.
And that's where I think, you know, you don't say that, oh, I can exactly break even, be okay. I had to always go break even plus one.
Absolutely.
As, as my bare minimum. And in the kickboxing class example, you know, we put class maximum of sixteen, that would be done in this space.
Kickboxing?
Yes. It's, I kickbox at the gym all the time.
Okay.
And I actually, um, the person that I have in mind for that is a certified trainer with kickboxing background. She's got every certification under the sun. She's actually one of the few instructors at the gym I go to that has actual real certifications where she's gone to the courses physically versus doing the online format. She's very, very well versed in it. She's looked at the space, she, um, you know, she actually thought maybe you could do up to twenty in here. So, because you do it in pairs, so it would be.
That's just a really sweaty room.
Yes, it is a real.
I was going to say, you got to get the air filter going there.
Yes. But, you know, with this, we, you know, I clearly, I, I priced it out where it is that minimum plus one. Chances are, you're going to be more toward your class maximum for a course like that. Part of the pricing, you know, prices, as much as I want to keep them affordable for people, they're going to be priced up a little bit. Because yes, I want to make sure that we're having some buffer so that it's actually worth our time to do it. And also, I want to be able to keep the class sizes small as a minimum because I know that marketing and advertising is going to be a chore for us right now because we don't have the doors open, we don't have normal stream. Part of the concept of going ahead and opening the lobby area in the afternoons a few days a week would be that it would help generate exposure and give people an opportunity to come in and sign up. We don't have our normal sign-up methods of people being.
So I want to ask you a question that's pointed. When you talk about concessions and the activities, recreational activities we have going on now, how does that impact our insurance for the year? Because our insurance was deducted because we were closed, so I want to know if there's any impact on that. And I also want to know also, um, the price, if we have a class in here or anywhere in the facility, if we open the doors, we have to clean afterwards. So how much is it going to cost us? Is that cleaning afterwards? And, and once again, these are not nitpicking stuff that we want to do after, you know, we pass the levy. Because we don't expect to be passing on all costs to folks after we pass the levy. However, right now, we're in a zero-deficit budget. And matter of fact, we, we know if we don't sell some property, we, we face a very tough decision as we get close to November, December. So if we bring programs in here or have people come through the front door on a regular basis, who's cleaning up after them? How do we pay for that? Because I can't ask a staff person to do something unless I add that to their duties, right? And then B, how does that affect our insurance?
So, I'll go, I'll, I can go reverse order. Insurance-wise, um, my understanding is that our insurance premium is based on expected revenue, which did include some of these types of programs. If you look at Steve's original budget for the year, it did include some recreational activity revenue. So I think we're covered as far as that goes. I have reached out to our insurance broker to find out what we would be looking at potentially in additional fees if we did reopen. And he emailed back wanting to know what we thought estimates of additional revenue would be and what our timeframe would look like. So we're in communication to get those answers. As far as cleaning, most of the activities, because we're just going to restrict to the lobby area, it's really going to be this front area, um, the bathrooms and whatnot. The bathrooms, as far as toilet paper, paper towels, that type of stuff, is already stuff that actually falls under my job duties. If I'm on a desk shift, I would be doing that anyway, so I would do that. I haven't had a chance to discuss with Matt yet, but I'm pretty sure he could fit it in as eight hours of the week to go ahead and clean toilets and whatnot as that stuff was needed. So, and, you know, there's going to be some cleaning of the floors and windows and whatnot with people in and out. That, I, you know, it's a conversation to have with Matt. I don't, I don't think it'll be a big deal.
So can we have that conversation with Matt and get some numbers from the insurance company before our next regular scheduled meeting so we can talk about those programs, please?
Yep, I would, um, time is really of the essence to be able to run summer anything. And with that meeting so late, we will, if we, if we don't make a decision and start rolling with stuff, at least initial marketing and promotion, I would say by mid-June, we won't really be able to run anything until at least, like, if we wait until the May 1st start marketing, we probably can't really run stuff till August 1st. We've missed a whole month of summer, six weeks or something at that point.
Yes.
So I have one thought there, and it's, and like I said in the last meeting, I, I wanted to be very, I, I know how easily people can misinterpret things. And so I, I, I want us to keep in mind that optics is everything. And I wanted to be very clear to people that we're not using any money to do this, basically. But, but with what she's saying, if there was, if there was one program that she favored and really felt like that one needs to go first, could, could, could we consider approving something like that? If, if it was only once she's told by the insurance that it won't raise our insurance, et cetera? I mean, that was my one thought there. If there was one, if there was one program she really wants to go on, could we approve that one program pending the insurance saying it's not going to cost you any money? Just because I do see time of, time is of the essence. So I don't know if you have a program in mind, I haven't talked to you, I have no clue.
Um, the, the things that I would really, the Safe Kids class needs to run again soon. That's the class that educates kids on how to stay home safely on their own without a parent. It also teaches them how to stay home safely with siblings if they're, you know.
How many did we have in the last class?
Uh, we had twelve in the last class.
And how much interest do we have so far?
I, I haven't put anything out for it. I know I had about a half dozen people that were wanting to know if we were going to offer it again because they were out of town during the spring break when we did offer it. I'm pretty sure I could fill a class again.
How much do we spend on the class?
Oh, we had that, that was in our. We have to break down again because that and the class go together. So the, for the class, we already have, um, it's about sixty dollars of shipping to cover the course materials. And then the instructor is about eighty dollars, I want to say. So you're about a hundred and twenty dollars plus the room charge for the class.
So we made money on that?
Yes, it's, uh, we charged thirty dollars per class, so we were three hundred and forty dollars for that class.
So I, I, like, I don't have that other list, but, like, on the kickboxing, each student would have to pay eight hundred and four dollars for the twelve sessions?
No, that's, that's our total course cost for the instructor and that's the loaded rate for the instructor. So that covers their hourly wage plus their payroll taxes plus some profit margin built in. That's the facility charge, twenty dollars per hour. So for twelve classes, it's eight hundred and four dollars. And then what the student would pay is a hundred and twenty, which is a pretty standard rate, ten dollars per class for a kickboxing class. And that's, so, that's based on paying the instructor thirty dollars an hour, which is what the base would pay for a kickboxing instructor. It's a comparable rate in town. Depending on the instructor, you might find one that would be willing to do it for a little bit lesser rate. But I think we could pay what the pretty standard rate is and still have profitable costs. One thing I think we need to, like, one of my personal focuses would be to make sure that we're paying people a competitive rate. If you want quality instructors, you want certified instructors.
So, I, I'm going to throw this out there. My, my biggest, I'm going to be the curmudgeon on the board right now. You know, we have very limited programs going on right now, right? And there's a reason for that. And I'll go back to the discussion I had with some folks from the city and that is sometimes it's good to remind people that we're closed for a reason that we need that, that to pass. I understand the reason that. We also want to keep people engaged with our district so that they want to come back and they see the value add. However, I don't know if this is the time to be doing that, so I'm just throwing that out there.
I think I might rebuttal for that, would be, I think we need to be cautious.
I, I wasn't, I appreciate it. Thank you. Do I have a motion? Yes.
I, I agree with what you said there, definitely. And, um, I, I, I don't. And I don't know if it's something staff should do or you should do. I know I briefly hit on it in the last meeting. For the lagoon to be open in a park that is fenced off and closed, it doesn't seem very wise. And playing into the optics and staying relevant. If there was some way for us to work with the city to get lifeguards down there for the summer, holy moly. But I, so that's that. The, what was the name of the first class, the Safe? Safe Kids?
Yeah, Safe Kids 101.
I mean, I would move that we approve of that class getting run, ran if it's not going to affect our insurance rates.
So we have a motion to approve the Safe Kids class?
Yes.
Discussion.
Well, I think we need to make sure that we're covering, you know, about the insurance.
Absolutely.
That was in the motion, yes ma'am. No further discussion, all in favor of approving, moving forward with the Safe Kids class as long as it doesn't increase our insurance? Eyes?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously, unanimously, tongue-tied. So Julie, can you look at that, please? And if it doesn't increase our insurance, can we move forward with the Safe Kids? Thank you very much.
It should not, Julie's just passed me a note that our $48,000 is the insurance premium. This came back in an email from our insurance broker. That $48,000 was based on projected revenue of $262,000.
And we're definitely not gonna make that issue.
So we definitely have a lot of room as far as being...
Do me a favor, when you, when we ask, when we confirm that with the insurance company, for future planning, can you ask the insurance company, will that, how does that change if we get donations or outside revenue to keep the pool open? Because that may change the insurance. So we have that for going forward for planning to reopen the pool, please?
And then, moving forward with the other plans as far as well-paid or whatever, I mean, no more hours than somebody's gonna be making, I really don't think that's an issue. I mean, for instance, such as if, you know, if the district were gonna do a baseball clinic or something, I could produce you six of the best coaches in the state. And I really, I really think that a lot of instructors are probably gonna fall into that. I guess some of them are doing it for a job. But I just, I don't want us to get narrow-sighted and only limit ourselves to that because there's, there's a lot of people out there, myself included, that if it was a volunteer opportunity, they'd take it. If it was a paid opportunity, they'd be like, yeah, no, I'm good. So, just look at everything. And if people decide they want to have a baseball clinic at the end of summer, just let me know.
I actually have had several inquiries about that in the last week.
I have too, so let me know.
People are very hungry for that.
All right.
Children have activities.
If there's no other business on recreation program discussion, I need a motion to adjourn.
Mr. Chair, I move it to adjourn.
All in favor? Thank you. Meeting's adjourned at 19:29.